I've not heard from, uh, Mr. Jones or Mr. Malaka. Have any of you?
Yeah, Mr. Malaka's on vacation this week.
Oh, is he? Okay.
Yeah, he sent a note.
That's right. Now I recall. Okay, thank you. Hi, there's Mr. Jones. So we, we do have a quorum, Madam Chair, if you'd like to begin the meeting.
I'm ready to begin. Okay, welcome everyone to the March twenty-third BZA meeting. We, um, are running our meetings all virtual now, and so if you aren't familiar with the structure, um, you can keep yourself on mute until your case is called, and then when your case is called, we would like for you to take yourself off of mute, turn your camera on, and then you can speak. I will swear you in. Um, after your case has been heard, you do not have to stay. Um, you can log off of the platform. Um, before we get into the cases, do we have any preliminary matters that we need to deal with?
Actually, we do. Um, but first of all, I just want to let, you know, the list that we sent you has been changed slightly. First thing is the appeal. Uh, the attorney for the appellant, uh, Mr. Ray King, has just sent me an email saying they're withdrawing their appeal. The two code enforcement officers, uh, for that case are here if you have any questions for them, but since we have it in writing that the attorney is withdrawing, I think we can go ahead and dismiss it.
Okay, um, do we need to move to dismiss that, or is it just a matter of law that is dismissed?
I believe it would be a matter of law that is dismissed if it's an email.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Okay, uh, then next on the list was a, uh, request to have a table heard, a case heard tonight that did not, uh, was not placed on the agenda and notice of did not go out. The city attorney and that, uh, that attorney have spoken, and that attorney, Ms. Klema, has agreed to, uh, postpone her or not have her case be heard tonight, but wait until next month. So that case is, is taken care of.
Okay.
Uh, next up is a question tabling.
Okay.
Uh, BZA twenty dash one twenty-six, uh, it should be reflected on the agenda that this case is at, is requesting a tabling, but we'd still like to have him request it for the record.
Okay, that's fifteen eighty-eight Franklin Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, will the applicant for fifteen eighty-eight take yourself off mute? State your name, please, for the record.
Yeah, um, yeah, the owner for fifteen eighty-eight Franklin Avenue. Thank you very much.
Um, can you state your name for the record, please?
Uh, Jensen Kai.
Okay. Uh, spell your last name, please.
C A I.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead with your request.
Um, I would like to, uh, postpone, um, um, the applications and, um, need to review with Architect for the, uh, minor changes.
Okay.
Postpon.
I'll, I'll move the table.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Jones, you're the only one.
Second.
Okay. It's been, it's been moved and seconded. Can you call the roll?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Jones?
I'm sorry, wait a second, sir.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah.
Ms. Mara?
Yes.
Chair Palmer Bailey.
Yes, your case is postponed. Thank you. Okay, so if anybody was here tonight that was going to speak about fifteen eighty-eight, are you raising your hand, Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, ma'am. We also would like to table this evening. I made that request to Mr., uh,
we're, we're gonna get here. Mr. Reynolds. Jack, we've got a whole list of preliminary matters, so if we don't list yours, then go ahead and raise hand, but we've got about six more to go, so yours is probably in here.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, okay, the next preliminary matter is BZA twenty-one dash zero zero four.
Okay.
They're now requesting a tabling to address an easement issue, uh, pending right-of-way exception and city staff comments.
Okay, twenty-one twenty-seven East Livingston, or, um, can you take yourself off of mute? And state your name for the record?
This is, that's my case. This is Jack. And I am the, for the property owner and the applicant, and we would like to table it. We do have some issues to work out with, uh, traffic and planning, but we'd like to take the time to, uh, iron out those issues.
Okay. If there's anybody here tonight that is going to speak on this case, it is going to get tabled. If there's anybody who wants to object to that, please state so. If not, I'll set motions from the board.
I'll move the table.
Second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah.
Mr. Mara?
Yes.
Chair Palmer Bailey.
Yes, your request is granted. Your case has been tabled.
And thank you in part for intrusion. I, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, number three on the list of preliminary matters is BZA twenty dash one twelve. Uh, the applicant is requesting a reconsideration of a previously approved, uh, BZA, uh, variance. Um, I'll let the applicant speak for themselves on that one.
Okay, will the applicant requesting the reconsideration come forward and state the reason for your request? State your name for the record first, please.
Yeah, this is Mike Beddoe. With G.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your, I didn't catch your last name.
You're fine. Beddoe, B E D D O W.
Go ahead, please, with your request.
Uh, yeah, we tried to request reconsideration. Um, originally, we were, I guess, given wrong information on the number of parking spots. Um, we believed there were twenty-two, and we're requesting a reduction to one. Uh, it turns out, uh, the second plan found out one of the parking spaces was already established. Um, so we're requesting reconsideration of that, again, that number further reduced.
So how has the property materially changed from when you first submitted your application? How has the application materially been changed?
It hasn't significantly. There was just a, we were considering one of the parking spots to be existing or, in fact, previous, uh, potential that there should have been there, and that's not the case. Uh, people have been parking there, so it was our assumption that it was a parking spot.
So you have a change in the, you have a change in the variance that you're requesting? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, is there anybody, uh, board members, do we have questions about this?
Can you give me the address for this one, so I can pull it up in my brain?
Yeah, it's six thirty-eight Neil Avenue.
If you remember, this is the cell tower near OSU, um, that was on a commercial property, and because they were removing some parking spaces to expand the enclosure, they had to conform the parking on the site, which they messed up by one space, so they're just asking for an additional space on top of that.
Did we decline it before?
No, no, it was approved, but it was approved with a space that they no longer have, so it, they need to
So it's not reconsideration at all? Well, it is. Mr. Jones, the original request was to reduce the provided parking from thirty-one required to twenty-one provided. Uh, the applicant did the math wrong, and there are only twenty spaces provided. So the board granted them a variance from thirty-one to twenty-one. If you would reconsider it, they'll come back next month, and the new variance would be from thirty-one to twenty. So instead of a ten-space difference, they're asking for an eleven-space difference. So the question is, can he come back? It's not for us to decide on it now. Exactly right, yeah. This is simply a reconsideration to see if you would be, because all board decisions are final. If you're willing to bring him back, but you don't think he's exhausted all his opportunities, and you think this is negligible enough that you can rehear it, uh, that's what this request is today. Okay, but he was approved before. Yes. Okay, yeah, I'm good with it, then that's fine.
Good.
All right, I'll move to reconsider.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah.
Mr. Demara?
Yes.
Chair Palmer Bailey.
Yes, your case will be reconsidered at the next available agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Madam Chair, this is Eric Wodley. I, I'm now on. I apologize.
You're welcome. Thank you. We're going to preliminary matters.
Next up on the list of preliminary matters is a similar, or another reconsideration, BZA twenty dash zero five zero. Uh, the address was two eighty-nine through two eighty-one Detroit Avenue. Uh, the, uh, the applicant has reconfigured the lot lines, which necessitate new rear yard and side yard variances, and they're also asking for a reconsideration to come back before the board to have the new variances reviewed. I believe Mr. O'Brien is on the call.
Yes, I am.
Okay, can you state your name for the record, please?
Tom O'Brien.
Okay, and then explain to us, um, the reason for the, um, new proposal?
We had a survey done, um, and the survey of the property came back forty-nine feet less, forty-nine square feet less. So we had to reduce the total lot areas. Um, we've gone back and forth with, um, James and some other folks in their office, um, and we're just hoping to be reconsidered, uh, at next meeting.
Okay, so your case had, your case had been approved already?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay, but you have different requests now. Okay. Questions from the board?
I'll move to reconsider.
Second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Wodley?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah.
Mr. Demara?
Yes.
Chair Palmer Bailey.
Yes, your case will be reconsidered at the next available agenda.
Thank you all.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the final, uh, preliminary matter is a, not really reconsideration, but, uh, BZA twenty dash zero three oh was approved by the board, um, Phil, if you can fill us in. I believe the board stamped elevation site plan. The elevation drawings have changed slightly, and they would simply like to have the board re-approved and do elevations. Phil, if you want to add to that, please do.
Yeah, um, that's correct. I'm pulling up the revised elevations. So this, this would not need, um, to be reconsidered at the next meeting. It would just need new elevations stamped.
What you're, what you're asking us to do right now, or are you asking us to put this on an agenda for later time?
The former. So Planning Division had to see the new elevation, uh, which they have approved. Um, and so it's just before you here now to, to stamp the new elevations.
Um, so Madam Chair, to clarify, there are no new variances, no variances being changed because the board, the condition of the board order was that the elevations would be stamped. Um, after working with planning, they've come up with new elevations that, um, we would like you to stamp, have those be stamped instead.
Okay, so we're just entering, so we're just entering this into the record?
Correct, and with your, with the board's permission, we'll restamp them and, and get them, uh, going on their permit.
Okay, so this is the, this is the side-by-side comparison of what changed? It looks like some, some windows have changed?
Correct.
That's right.
Where is it?
Uh, the property address is.
Two East Stewart.
Say it one more time.
Two six two East Stewart Avenue.
And so that's an area, that's in German Village, so they're subject to architectural review, right? Yeah, I believe the Columbus South Side, Mr. Jones.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I feel like I'm at a disadvantage. It's like, all of these things keep coming back to us with glimps, glimpses of what happened in the past, and we're expected to, like, act on it instantly. This is not simple, right? Um, I don't even know what to say, okay? But. Well, again, a, a condition that staff had was that board would stamp the elevations that, for example, you know, I think they got a height variance. So in order for them to build their garage at the height requested, we want to ensure that the proposed building looked a certain way. Um, the, the initial proposal didn't match what planning had in mind, so they've changed their plans to match planning's designs, and because we stamped it, uh, they have to come back and get your permission, so essentially that's, the only thing to the windows, but it doesn't affect the variances at all.
If staff is, if staff is comfortable with this plan, then I, yeah, I have no, uh, no qualms to, um, accepting your request.
All right, I'll move to request the new, the new site elevation plan.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, Bill, you're asking, you're requesting that they present the new elevation plan?
No, I'm moving to accept the new plan that we just saw. The revisions.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, do we have a second? Okay, I think our motion has failed. Jamie?
Okay, well.
Is there anything that we can provide as far as some additional insight on the request of, uh, kind of what you're uncomfortable with approving? This is Aaron Faniff, and I was just, I can add some, area interjects and add some color to this if it's necessary, because really, we didn't make any changes from the original approval. The only change that we, that we made was the removal of about three windows, and that was for budgetary purposes. Um, the height elevation, all of the other locations on the lot, everything is still staying the same. Um, so, uh, just to reassure you that the changes are not material.
I'll second.
Okay, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Wodley?
Uh, I apologize, my internet cut out, so I probably should abstain, um, but I'm back on.
Okay.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah.
Mr. Demara?
Yes.
Chair Palmer Bailey.
Yes, your approved, your, your plan has been stamped into the record. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, Madam Chair, I believe that concludes our preliminary matters. Uh, as previously, previously stated, the appeal has been withdrawn, so we can move on with our regular agenda.
Okay, um, okay, case number one, fifty-six oh seven Links Drive, fifty-six oh seven Links Drive. Will the applicant take yourself off of mute? State your name for the record.
David Suarez.
Hi, Mr. Suarez, can you raise your right hand? You promised that the testimony you give tonight be the truth, nothing but the truth. Please say that I do.
I do.
Okay, we're going to hear from the city first, and then we'll come back to you for comments.
All right, BZH one one nine, that's fifty-six seven Links Drive, located on the south side of Links Drive, approximately two hu, or six hundred and twenty-five feet northwest of Long Rachel Road. This is within the area of the Northland Community Council and the East Coast Community District. The site has developed a single dwelling in a residential neighborhood. The applicant is responding to a zoning code violation from October twenty, twenty twenty to address a driveway expansion without a certificate of zoning clearance.
Sorry, Michael, I'm, uh, I don't have the PowerPoint up yet, um.
Okay.
So.
Not a lot of it for this one, so I'll just continue reading, and we can go up any questions, but the app was sided for expanding their driveway and request of var, or variances to increase the maximum width of the drive from twenty feet to twenty-four point four two feet and to maneuver between the street right away and the setback line. Planning, um, request Northland Plan Volume Two Northern Northland Standards address the issue of driveway width. The proposed driveway expansion within private property can be supported by traffic management as long as there is a condition to a width of twenty feet at the right-of-way line. The Northland Council recommends approval of this request conditioned upon the applicant restoring the driveway where it meets the right-of-way line to a width of twenty feet and recreating the curb and apron, removing the concrete, and rethoughting the portion of the tree lawn, which had been improperly paved. That recommend approval is the division of traffic supports the request since grant would not have an adverse effect on the safety property or welfare of public or the city, really an efficient flow of traffic, including pedestrians, and to meet traffic and the Northland Community Council's conditions, drive away with uh, to twenty, the right-of-way line, uh, via a requirement. I'm happy to answer any question.
So is it just my connection, or is Michael breaking up for everybody?
Michael's breaking up.
Okay. Um, yeah, if you could take us through the slides, um, I think Phil's putting the slides up. Can you connect, can you go to the pictures, please?
Yep. So there's the aerial. You can see if you just go back to the other one, that's probably better. There along the left side, more pavement was added for maneuvering garage. The applicant can explain why. Uh, the only condition is that they redo the curb at the right-of-way line, which as you could see on the path, but along the street had been uh, dismantled a little bit, so they would just need to recreate that.
So we're allowing the additional, uh, width, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Let me see the picture again.
And that would be not for parking on the, and knows that it's only for maneuvering out of the garage.
Um, so this, this appears to be additional parking space. Am I incorrect about this?
It's going to be for, uh, maneuvering area.
Oh, okay, sir, I, I get it. My question was to staff about the parking?
I mean, like I said, we, we've told him that this would be for maneuvering only, that he would not be allowed to park on it.
And who's going to police that?
Code enforcement or the neighbors?
Not likely.
Okay. Okay, uh, Mr. Suarez, do you have any?
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yeah, good.
Um, hold on, let me start the video. Um, can we go back to the last slide with the garage? So, this is, I guess this is where I'm confused. If it's, if it's for maneuvering only, the concrete goes up to a spot that would not allow you to maneuver, but is, um, Board Member Demora said would allow you to park, um, you, you can't come back out of a parking spot and be that close, so I, I also think that this may be a additional parking area that would have trouble policing, so I guess I'm confused about how this is maneuvering only and, uh, based off of at least what we're seeing, you know, what, how that can just be maneuvering possibility?
I, I think it was probably built with the intention of being parking, but now that it is there and he's been cited for it, um, he understands what's done on it, and you'd have to talk to the applicant regarding that.
I appreciate that.
Michael, this is Bill. I also want to, that picture you're looking at, it's my understanding from what you say, the condition is that, that on the apron, that, that patch between the sidewalk and the street is going to go back to grass, and he's going to, the curb is going to be rebuilt? Is that the case?
Uh, the division of traffic management conditions on the curb being rebuilt, and then Northland Community Council conditioned theirs on that other section being grass as well.
I'm sorry, you broke up. You said what?
The Northland Community Council conditioned their approval on the reduced driveway opening feet and then the apron or tree lawn, uh, between the and the grass.
Can Jamie read that for you? We're having a hard time understanding.
Yeah, we, you're, you're, I read the word, Michael.
And I guess I can speak for traffic. I mean, we conditioned it that that new concrete section will be removed um, in a regular standard driveway that's shown in the older concrete remains.
And Madam Chair.
That's traffic?
Yes.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, I'll be able to speak to our recommendations.
Okay. Okay, so, I think I, I think, I think we have a good understanding of the request. Do we have any other questions before we hear from the applicant? Okay, Mr. Suarez, go ahead.
Say that again, please, I'm sorry.
You can go ahead and speak to the application.
Uh, yeah, I was not aware of how to do the, uh, the turnaround area, so we built it, uh, to the house completely, but it's going to be, uh, for maneuvering the car. I'm going to put a concrete, uh, uh, chair, type, title bench to block any, any, uh, undue, uh, vehicles that want to park there.
So is it the, why, why do you need the maneuvering? You can't back out from your driveway into the street? Is there an issue there?
Oh, yes, man, I, uh, I'm a retired twenty-year veteran, uh, and, um, I have a fuse neck, so I cannot turn around, um, both ways completely, you know, kind of to, to maneuver, so it makes me hard for me to, I had a couple incidents already trying to back up to the street with people and some cars, so I'm trying to stay safe in that area.
Okay, okay. Is there anybody, um, here that wants to speak about this application? Please take yourself off of mute. State your name for the record.
Madam Chair?
State your name for the record, please.
Yes, this is Dave Paul with the Northland Community Council.
Okay, raise your right hand, please, and swear that the testimony you give tonight be the truth, nothing but the truth. Please say I do.
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, members of the committee, or the, uh, commission and Madam Chair, we met with the applicant on February twenty-fourth and discussed this case, uh, and the applicant did explain that he had medical issues that concerned him in terms of his ability to see uncom, uncoming traffic. He described that as the reason for the variance. Described that as the reason for the variance. Uh, we did impress upon him that he's not going to be able to park vehicles there or allow others to park there. And we suggested that he put some kind of feature placed on that concrete in order to make that, uh, pretty obvious visually. Um, our committee did consider, uh, whether to support this, uh, application. It was not unanimous, but, uh, our committee voted eight to six to recommend approval with one condition. And that was that the applicant will agree to restore the driveway where it meets the right of way line to a width of 20 feet and recreate the curb and apron, removing the concrete from and re-sodding the portion of the tree lawn which has been improperly paved. Um, and I understand that traffic is also, uh, at least mentioned the restoration of the curb. Uh, so we do stand in support, although we understand your, a little bit of your confusion. We shared it, but the applicant helped us understand what it was he was trying to achieve here.
Okay, okay, thank you. So anybody else who wants to speak on this application? Okay, board members, do we have any questions?
Madam Chair, has the applicant agreed to those conditions from both the city and Northland? I do, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So you're agreeing that you are going to, um, take the pavement up in the tree line right away, restore the curb, put grass back, and then you're going to place some kind of fixture, structure um, in the, in the driveway um, concrete portion that identifies that section as not to be parked.
Yes, I will.
Okay. Board members, what are you thinking?
I'm a no.
I'll call the question with conditions.
Okay, question's been called. Please call the roll.
Mr. Waddely.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
No.
Mr. Demora.
Yes.
Chair Palmer Bailey.
Yes, your variance request has been granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if I'm following correctly, I think that we're on case 901 Ingleside Avenue. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, 901 Ingleside Avenue. Will the applicant take yourself off mute and state your name for the record?
Can you see me?
No, I can't.
Oh, almost. Hold on one quick second. One more button to push. Start my video. There we go. No, your video is yours. Okay, there we go.
Okay. State your name for the record, please.
Yes, I'm here for the applicant, um, Inclusive Properties LLC.
Is anybody else here with you?
Um, actually I do have Daniel Bishop, uh, with us here.
Okay, Mr. Bishop.
Hi there. So, yes.
Okay, if you guys can both raise your right hand. And you swear that the testimony you get tonight be the truth, nothing but the truth. Please say I do.
I do.
Okay, we'll hear from the city first and then we'll come back to you, Mr. Comack.
Thank you.
All right, is my audio better now?
For now.
Okay. All right, BZA 21-005 at 901 Ingleside Avenue. This is located on the southwest corner of Ingleside Avenue in Quality Place. It is within the Harrison West Society boundaries and it is Zoned M Manufacturing District. The 0.57 acre site is developed with a 12,606 square foot warehouse building. The site is surrounded by predominantly multi-unit residential developments. A school is located to the east of the site and some manufacturing uses remain nearby despite trending redevelopment towards multi-unit residential. The applicant is proposing to reuse the former warehouse building for a mix of uses. A veterinary office would be the primary use with the most intense uses provided within the remaining space being gym or fitness space. To accommodate the change of use, the applicant proposes variances to conform existing site conditions and a special permit for outdoor or animal space associated with the veterinary office. To conform existing site conditions, variances to reduce driveway, aisle, maneuvering, minimum number of parking spaces required and building line requirements are necessary. Planning supports the request with bicycle parking as shown on the site plan, although the Harrison West Plan recommends mixed density residential at this location. Planning supports or proposes mix of uses as the area is trending towards a more mixed use area and the proposed uses complement the nearby multifamily residential uses. Columbus citywide planning policies states that bicycle parking should be incorporated into development, that entrance doors connect to sidewalks and that parking reductions may be considered when factoring in the nature of the use and the provision of bicycle and pedestrian facilities. Furthermore, C2P2 states that parking lots be screened from view of the right of way and that street trees be provided. Planning does not have a comment on the aisle maneuvering driveway width or outdoor animal runs as the applicable guidelines do not address them. The Division of Parking Services supports the variance request for application BZA 21-005 as impacts of the development have been analyzed and found sufficient capacity on the street network for overflow parking demand. The Harrison West Society recommends approval of this request. Staff can recommend approval as the uses contribute towards mixed use area. The design is consistent with C2P2 design guidelines and sufficient parking capacity can be found on the street network for overflow parking demands. Uh, we would also recommend conditioning that the applicant provide appropriate easement documentation for the use of the drive that approaches into the adjacent property to the west. Also in your supplemental packet were two emails, uh, opposing the uh, special permit for the animal kennel without door runs. Uh, this is kind of a technicality. Required by zoning clearance. The area is a 200-ish square foot, um, area for animals within the veterinary office to go to the bathroom. I did explain that to the, uh, people that were concerned and they chose to have their comments, uh, passed along anyways. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Um, you, you didn't have any conditions, is that correct?
Uh, the condition would be to provide easement documentation.
Right. Other than that, though?
Nope.
Okay. Um, Mr. Comack, are you in agreement with the condition for the easement?
Yeah, Chair Palmer, let me make sure that we can communicate here. Okay. I am in agreement with the, uh, condition being that if we go to use that drive, that we obtain either an easement or adequate legal documentation. Um, because it's unclear. The property's been used since literally like 1887, um, adjacent to a former, uh, rail line. And so we might have a variety of legal options there. And I just want to make sure that the condition is broad enough to incorporate whatever appropriate legal access I might have. It might be, it might be, um, adverse possession. It might be a quiet title action, something like that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's acceptable to me.
Okay. I appreciate that. And, um, I'm happy to discuss any of the other.
Yes, please do.
Okay, so. I apologize for the nuance. I'll be in front of the computer in a minute. Um, so Michael's report had needs of a few fine points. The first is Harrison West, uh, recommended approval is overwhelmingly, um, well received because the neighborhood that has seen the influx of apartments.
All right.
All right.
Modern civilization. Here we go. The, woo.
Hold on, hold on. Almost out of my chair. Sorry. Um, all right, so the Harrison West area has seen significant apartments within three blocks of this site. There's 5,000 residential units. The amenities that the area is interested in include smaller scale commercial development.
Can you turn off your other device?
Oh, my God, I'm trying so hard to do it. Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. Um, no, no, it's shutting off. Okay, is it on?
Now it is.
I couldn't make it swipe. I couldn't make swat. Um, so the building itself is old and is in a variety of states, non-conforming. The building lines are closer to Ingleside. They're at a zero setback, um, right up on the right of way. The building otherwise is located on a really odd shaped lot that you probably noticed from a few of the photos. Um, the applicant is making an adaptive reuse, so as currently configured. Michael, do you have an aerial photo that you can put up?
Phil, can you get that?
Yep. If not, I've got, I've got it. If I have the, do I have the ability to share? Just going for it? Okay. Can you see the, um, can you see the power screen, uh, Chair? Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. So here's what I, I'll walk through just the brief presentation, the site. This is the odd shaped site. It's kind of like a inverse triangle here. We have Ingleside and we have Quality Place. Both of these roads are not really roads or streets. They're alleys. So interestingly enough, there aren't the requirements for street trees. And there's, um, reduced development standards for parking along alleys versus the streets. So the reason I'm telling you that is, is you see this picture on your screen now, this is the existing aerial condition. We have 17 legal parking spaces now. Along this, um, driveway, which it looks like a driveway, you know, like a circular, uh, for circuity. It's actually the property line is about three feet off of our building. So this is a longstanding, uh, you know, widely used by this area, um, driveway. And again, we've got to do some legal research to figure out if we have access rights to use it or not. But, um, so that's why a few of the development standards do not assume that we would have access to this drive. So we have 17 spaces here. We got creative with the spaces. And it was actually shortly after we filed the application, I got together with the Division of Traffic and learned that both of these streets were alleys and that we could be more creative with head in parking as you see on the site plan. So you saw the photos. I'm only going to show you a couple of the relevant spots. This looks like a normal driveway, except it's not. We've only got three feet of ownership. Um, this is the front parking lot. And as you can see, the building across the street had the head in parking. So that's what gave me the idea to start getting creative about how we approached the parking. Um, this is the strip here that you see from the air about how the parking is currently located. This is the, um, this is the zoning map just to show you. So existing conditions show all 17 spaces here with a really wide drive aisle. And the reason I'm giving so much detail is that I know Mr. Demora likes the information with regard to parking. We didn't take it, uh, you know, we gave it due consideration. So what we were able to come up with, with the parking space after this was really to expand on the parking, um, to increase from seven, from 17 um, to the 23 spaces. Also, the handicap spaces are now, uh, considered here because they was, were not, um, fully developed on the existing site. And with just a little bit of creativity on the 45 degree parking, we were able to squeak out some extra spaces. This is just a quick exhibit to show you that everything works and fits. And so the drive aisle that you see here with the big arrow meets code. Um, one quick thing while we're looking at site plans, this is the same site plan. So Michael said kind of a technicality. I consider a gap in Columbus code and I've been finding a lot of them lately. I think I mentioned this to y'all last month that dogs don't drive. So the parking calculation for animal medical type of uses should not be the same as like regular medical because nobody drives the dog there and sits with it. I mean, very small number. But furthermore, nobody, it's like if a person went to a doctor, they would park their car and go and sit with us needing a parking space. That doesn't happen with this use. So that's one of the things that we've located, uh, within the code is we're exploring the required parking count. The other, of course, is the area for the, um, animal, um, housing areas. You know, it's again, it's not like an office space where you need those parking. One other nuance, very interesting, the green area here. This is it. It's 20 by 10 feet max. Um, and speaking with Michael, he said, I don't think you need a, um, special permit for your outdoor dog area because you're a vet. And I said, but I'm a vet with groom, with a kennel as like an amenity. And he said, ah, I'm not sure we do that. To be honest, this, so much of this site is already grandfathered. I'm not, and that's the real reason to fix these items on a BZA. I just didn't want to leave it to chance that we would have further non-conformities if the city code changed in the future. So while we do not actually, we're not sure we really need it, we are going to have just this small area. The only thing that makes it a special permit is the fact that we are going to use a five foot, which is not a structure to enclose an outdoor area. There is no definition of a dog run. There is no definition of an outdoor dog area. So this is me over lawyering and I apologize. But it's pretty small. It's probably, um, I, I would guess to venture, it's not as big as some of your bathrooms, uh, very small 200, uh, feet. And again, it's not for outdoor, um, activities of the dogs. It's to take them out. Furthermore, Dan's on the line. He can speak to it if you need him to. All of the animals are taken out on leashes. This was an extra safety precaution that vets who care about people next to a potential drive aisle or next to two alleys, just in case dogs for it would get loose. This was an extra precaution.
Yeah, safety is at our utmost concern. We just wanted to have a fenced in area where we could safely be able to walk the dogs to be able to eliminate. The last thing we want is for someone's baby to get loose and, you know, get clipped by a car or something like that. So it's really just a safety measure. They would, you know, it's not like anyone's turning dogs out to let them hang out out there all day. It's literally just to go outside, go to the bathroom and come back in safely.
Right. 20 feet by 10 feet really can't even leave more than one out there, even if it was. So that's, we just wanted to let you know that we had thought about that. So after, um, finding out that the Ingleside Avenue is actually an alley, we were able to reduce a number of the variances to the ones that Michael has listed here. Um, there was even one further that we took out. So this is the final list plus approximately 220 square feet of green space that could be an outdoor area for animals. Um, so that is in a nutshell, the request. I want to just cover one more detail and a little bit finer point than Michael did. This was, I had done a wee bit of work in the, um, back in the sandborne maps about how this one is from 1887, these maps. Just trying to figure out if we had any legal claim to the roads and we've just started that work. I want you to understand what we talked about in depth with Harrison West. And that is simple. The building and the uses are really interesting, both in terms of scale and then in terms of capacity or intensity of use at a particular time of the day. As we cranked through these numbers, and these are just a couple of the worksheets when we were talking to folks. The total square footage of the building is divided what we expect to be out of three uses. The veterinary use, the office use and a local gym, which again, within three blocks, something crazy like 5,000 people. We think it's a walkable, um, development. And in fact, you can't, you can't drive through this neighborhood without seeing dogs and people walking their dogs. So the interesting thing about the parking count is at a maximum, it's 48. And of course, we only have the 23 that we can come up with right now. This is the estimated area for same. But the point that I'm hoping seals the deal with regard to just how much thought we gave to the proper mix of uses. This is just me, my chart. The dog, uh, the, the city pets operation has an early morning. It doesn't have a super early morning function. Has a mid, you know, a regular morning function. People drop the dogs off and then a later after work intensity. The gym, of course, is early morning and early afternoon. Then there's a, um, you know, a more moderate level during the middle of the day. And then offices 8:30 to 5, 7 to 5, or 7 to 4. They're mostly bulk of the day. So what we thought here was that it was a proper complement of uses that made use of the building, but didn't overburden the parking, uh, situation on site. So we also did obtain the waiver from the. So, we also did obtain the waiver from the parking czar.
Your time is about up, so can you sum up, please?
Yes, as the applicant, please submit this into the record. Madam Chair, if you'd enter this, and Jamie's got a copy of it electronically into the record, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. But this is why we're asking for the volume of parking reduction.
Is there anybody here that wants to speak about this application? Okay, board members, do we have any questions? I don't see a need to take the, take the variances one by one, so if we can call the question with all the with all the variances as one, with the applicant committing to getting legal access to decide where there is zero setback.
Oh, and Chair Palmer, that's only if we use the drive.
Yeah, I changed the condition to provide appropriate legal documentation instead of appropriate easement documentation.
Okay, that's fine.
For use of that drive.
Okay.
I'll call the question with the legal explanation added.
Okay, question has been called, please call the roll.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah.
Mr. Waddely.
Yes.
Mr. Demora.
Yes.
Chair Palmer Bailey.
Yes, variance and special permit granted, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate the comment.
Okay, 494 East Dunedin Road. The applicant, take yourself off of mute, and state your name for the record.
My name is Dennis Carney. We have a home at 494 East Dunedin in Clintonville.
Okay, can you raise your right hand and the testimony you give tonight will be the truth, nothing but the truth, please state, I do?
I do.
Okay, we'll hear from the city first, and then we'll come back to you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. 494 East Dunedin Road is located on the north side of Dunedin Road, approximately 425 feet west of Indianola Avenue. The site is zone R3 residential and is within the Clintonville Area Commission. As you see from the slides, the site is developed with a single-unit dwelling in a residential neighborhood. The applicant proposes to raise and rebuild a garage and request variances to reduce the minnow side yard from, for the garage from three feet to zero feet, so that it can be built on the existing foundation, as well as conserve an existing tree, and a variance to increase the level of height of the garage from 15 feet to 18 feet. The Clintonville Area Plan recommends new garages should be compatible and similar in character to nearby designs, and located behind the house. Additionally, the plan recommends permitting increased height for a garage if it is architecturally compatible with a primary house. The Division of Traffic Management has no comment, and the Clintonville Area Commission recommends approval. Staff can recommend approval as well, as this request follows the guidelines as prescribed in the Clintonville Area Commission. Even though we had no conditions listed, it's typically our policy to stamp elevation drawings when the roof pitch is increased, so I'm going to amend my report to please request that the board have the elevation drawing stamped. With that, we'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Carney, are you ready to submit final renderings of the plan?
I believe we are.
Okay, so you agree that you will get those to the city so they can stamp those for the record?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do you have anything else to add about the application?
Well, I, I did want to share with you that we had an arborist look at the oak tree in the backyard that we're trying to maintain. We want to make sure that the, the tree is healthy. The arborist told us that it is the largest pin oak that he has ever seen, and it is a huge tree. He has recommended that we try and maintain as much as possible the current footprint, because moving it too much, especially three feet, towards that tree would endanger its health. It is currently very healthy, it's between 150 and 200 years old, and it is the largest tree outside of California that I have ever seen. It, it provides great shade, and we would hope to maintain the health of the tree by not moving the garage toward that tree by too much.
Okay. Is there anybody else here to speak about this application? Okay, board members, do we have any questions for the applicant? If not, are we ready to call the question?
I'll call the question.
Question's been called, please call the roll.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah.
Mr. Waddely.
Yes.
Mr. Demora.
Yes.
Chair Palmer Bailey.
Yes, your variance is granted, good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 234 East Woodrow Avenue.
Hello, this is.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, this is Nick Pho for 234 East Woodrow Avenue.
Spell your last name, please.
It's P-H-O.
Okay, raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you give tonight will be the truth, nothing but the truth, please state, I do?
I do.
Thank you, go ahead with the city, and then we'll come back to you, Mr. Pho.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 234 East Woodrow Avenue is located at the northeast corner of East Woodrow Avenue and Brock Street, served by the Columbus South Side Area Commission, and it's known R2F residential. The small corner lot is currently undeveloped and includes a single mature tree in the rear. Surrounding uses include single-unit dwellings to the west, north, and east, a duplex to the south, and a church building to the southeast. The applicant proposes to construct a two-story, single-unit dwelling and a detached two-car garage in the rear with access off Brock Street. The applicant will be adding a new tree on the lot in addition to two street trees along East Woodrow Avenue and Brock Street. Variances are to allow the dwelling to encroach on the 30 by 30 clear-vision triangle, and to increase the building lot coverage from 50% to 56%. The near-south side area plan recommends street trees greater than six inches in caliper should be protected during and after construction, and that the protection zone should include the drip line to avoid compaction of the roots. C2P2 and the near-south side area plan recommend street trees be provided as part of new development, with guidance from Recreation and Parks Department, and Planning Division is in support of the front elevation concepts and the site plan showing new street trees and existing tree preservation. Division of Traffic Management states that it would appear that intersection site distance and the site distance for adjacent driveways would not be adversely affected by the requested variance. On the south side, recommended approval, and city departments recommend approval. The proposed site plan is consistent with area plan goals for tree preservation and street tree planting, and the concept elevations are consistent with C2P2 residential design guidelines. And we recommend that the applicant commit to the stand site plan and elevation concepts. Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Pho, do you have anything else to add to this application?
No, I think Phil Paul has said it quite nicely. It is a small lot, and there was a house before, on the lot before, but unfortunately, it is a small lot and is a corner lot, and it's only a 30-foot wide, and the 30-foot vision clearance triangle requirement would take most of the lot, and also I'm just requesting 6% more at the 56% build lot, and so I hopefully request that this, this will be approved so that we can actually use this lot to its highest and best potential.
Okay. Is there anybody else here to speak about this application? Board members, do we have questions for this applicant? Okay, if none, are we ready to call the question?
Call the question.
Question's been called, please call the roll.
Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones.
If he's saying my name, yeah.
Mr. Waddely.
Yes.
Mr. Demora.
Yes.
Chair Palmer Bailey.
Yes, your variance is granted, good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Our next case is 910 Dublin Road, 910 Dublin Road. Will the applicant take yourself off of mute and state your name for the record? Ma'am, if you're talking, we can't hear you. Still can't hear you.
How about now?
Now we can. Please state your name, please.
All right, my name is Miriam Siegfried. I'm a project engineer with the City of Columbus, Division of Water.
Okay, can you raise your right hand? You swear that the testimony you give tonight will be the truth, nothing but the truth, please state, I do?
I do.
Okay, we'll hear from the city first, and then we will hear from you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 910 Dublin Road is located on the north side of Dublin Road, approximately 400 feet west of Twin Rivers Drive, not served by any area commission, and it's zoned M Manufacturing. The 75-acre site is developed with the City of Columbus Utilities Complex, including the divisions of Sewer, Power, and Water. Surrounding uses include a commercial warehouse, Franklin County Engineer's Office, and industrial land being developed as mixed-use to the west, a railroad line to the north, TV station, and US Postal Service office to the east, and the Souda Riverfront to the south. The applicant, the Division of Water, proposes to install temporary portable buildings as its central compliance laboratory while renovations take place for two years. Special permit is a required, is required to allow portable buildings. Parcel does not fall under any land use plan, and C2P2 does not address temporary buildings. So, comments from traffic and city departments can recommend approval as the proposal appears to be consistent with the general purpose and intent of the manufacturing district, and would not have no apparent effect on the character of the neighborhood. We recommend the condition that the special permit be valid for two years from the issue date of the associated board order. Madam Chair.
Okay. Sorry. So, I'm sorry, Mrs. Siegfried, are you comfortable that, that's the request is a two-year period? For the temporary building?
I'd like to also introduce our consultant, who is also at this meeting, Mike Giangioadorno, with Jacobs Engineering. Mike, would you like to speak to the project schedule?
Yes, good afternoon, Lord and Madam Chair. Thank you for your time.
Can you state your name for the record, please, so I can then swear you in?
Yes, my name is Michael Giangioadorno.
And then, you promised the testimony you give tonight will be the truth, nothing but the truth, please state, I do?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. The, the we, we would like to understand that the duration and if there is an extension possible to this, once approved. The two years of construction is anticipated to start once the contractor has awarded the project, and the contractor is not currently anticipated to be awarded this project until the fall of this year, so September of this year. So, if we can extend it for two years beyond that September date of 2021, that would be the request on our behalf.
So, how about we just make it even three years, when that should cover your time needs?
That would be acceptable, yes.
Okay, board, are we okay with that? Okay, is there anyone else here to speak to this application?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to state into the record that we did receive one letter of support.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that. Okay, if we have no other questions, are we ready to call the roll, call the question?
I'll call the question with a three-year three-year validity.
Okay, question's been called, please call the roll.
Mr. Waddely.
Yes.
Mr. Demora.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah.
Chair Palmer Bailey.
Yes, your variance is granted, thank you. Special permit.
Thank you.
Okay, if that is done, Jamie, are we concluded?
Yes, that is the last case on the agenda. We are officially concluded, if somebody wants to adjourn.
Okay, I will adjourn the meeting, thank you for your time.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Thank you.
Phil, Mike, John.
Okay.
Well, Michael, Michael Jones, you can, you can do whatever you want.
Oh, I, I thought you told me you were, I thought you said call you or talk to you, maybe I'm mistaken, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak to you in a little bit, but I just want to talk to staff real quick, and then I'll give you a ring if you're free.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Yeah, so somehow I hung up on, I hit my speakerphone and it hung up on me, so that's why I've got two icons here.
Nice.
Michael, it sounds like your, your, your phone is doing a lot better when you put your headset on, what, what do you think the issue was?
I don't know if it's my phone, or I guess it's my phone, I don't know.
You're on the third floor?
I'm on the second floor, but like I got three out of four bars, 5Gs.
I think we can, we're still live, if you guys want to.